Let's call the City Marine City Commission to order regular meeting Thursday, August 1st, 2019, 7:00 PM. Could we please have a moment of silence for our dearly departed? And let's please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Flossin.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant.
Here.
Commissioner Burkaman.
Here.
City Manager Love.
Here.
Moving on to communications. Can I get a motion to receive and file the Michigan Municipal League letter and a letter from Washington Life Center?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions on this? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Move on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the city commission. Please state your name and address. Please limit your comments to five minutes. This is your time for you to raise issues. The commission will not respond, but the issues will be followed upon as necessary. Anyone like to speak? Hearing none? Going once? Twice? All right, moving on to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or concerns on the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Approval of the commission regular meeting minutes, July 18th, 2019.
So moved.
Support.
Any corrections or deletions? Yeah, I should've worn my glasses. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the business license for M-I-D-I Transport? Business license for Mariner Dental? A business license for River Place Art Pavilion? And a business license for Rivertown Event Center in Blaine Pike?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through D.
Second.
Any questions on that?
I had a question. I had talked to city manager earlier, and I had talked to some other people, and I thought there was something else going on there. But, um, my question is, for each business that's there, do we require a license for each business?
Um, it's the same owner and the same building, so at this point in time, we're not.
Separate building.
Um, you're talking about for their other one downtown?
No. Talking about the event center.
Right.
If they, if they do something in the gazebo.
In the gazebo?
And, dude, that's not part of the, of the other two.
If it's not part of it.
They'd have to get a license.
If they require something. We, we don't really have that thoroughly defined in our business license ordinance. That is something that we're working to fully define what entails the need for having an additional business license.
Yeah, I just, one, one reason I would, uh, I'm in Cotterville. Everybody knows that, too.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm hearing a lot of complaints, so. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Burkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Moving on to unfinished business, the mosaic project.
Good evening.
Um, well, first of all, we thought that the installation and maintenance agreement showed where the mosaics were going to be. Uh, we gave more areas than we were going to need. However, so I'm sorry if you thought I should've been here sooner. I didn't even know I should be. But, um, there has been a change that I have to make a request with you, from you. Um, recently, um, a location was chosen at the Nautical Mile Park. And while the park is, got a lot of area that could be used, uh, there was only one place that we were going to be allowed to put a mosaic. And that was in the strip that butts up to the Riviera Restaurant. Um, and as you know, this park is really the home of maritime days. And so, for that, mostly for that reason, we were not able to have a better location than that. And it was one of our major donors who wanted to put their mosaic there. But they weren't happy with the location with the parking lot behind. So they wanted to know if we could find a better place. Um, I think you have been given another sketch of the small Watchman Park. And I don't know whether you're all familiar with it. It's the one with the tall Orlite sculpture. Uh, and when I looked at that, I realized that was an even better place. And it would enhance that area, you know? It wouldn't take up that much room. But we would put the mosaics beside it at each side. And we really liked that idea. And our donor was mollified, you know? So I felt good about that. Um, so, and today, um, I met with all the Miss Dig crew and showed them all of the areas, including Nautical Mile. Uh, but we really don't want to go to Nautical Mile. But we, we did get everything approved. There are no gas lines, there are no electrical cables or anything like that that we're to be worried about. So they called me afterwards and told me that it was clear. Um, our construction company is ready to start this Monday. So, um, the project will take between three to four days to complete. And it'll only involve the immediate sites. Um, the, the parks are going to be wide open for normal use. You know, we're not going to cause a problem for anybody. So now what I'm asking is your approval of all the sites and the different parks, which are, you know, ones that you've seen before. Uh, and to add to that, the two mosaics in Watchman Park.
Now, the two mosaics in Watchman Park?
Mm-hmm.
Are they, 'cause I, is it, was it just one in Nautical Mile, or was there two?
Well, we were going to put two there.
So you're just moving those two to?
Yes.
Watchman?
Yes. And that way, they're, they're out, you know? Nobody will have a problem with our mosaics in Nautical Mile Park, because it is a very active park. Yes.
Um, I got a question in the Broadway Park. I, I know you got them next to these two trees in here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know the other corner, you know, where we have our big sign?
Yeah.
Was there any thought about putting them in front of there to get rid of those shrubs so that they could go there?
We would've loved to have put them actually on the south side of that berm, but we weren't allowed to go anywhere near there because there's a lot of electrical.
Well, that's in the, that's in this side. I'm talking the front side. I'm talking in the front corner.
Um, I think I would have a problem with the garden club.
Well, the problem we have right now is the, the bushes that got in there, they're getting too tall and they're covering the sign, so I know it was.
Yeah, those, you know, can be cut back drastically.
Yes.
Um, I have a lot of hydrangeas myself. I cut them back to about two feet in the fall. And that way, I can control the height. And I think that should take care of them.
All right. Because I know at one time, there was talk of moving them. My only concern with this park, the, the rest of them are fine. The only one I'm worried about is the closeness of these to those two small trees.
Yeah, we, I talked with, um, Jeff Ward, who's our construction guy. And he felt that we were far enough away.
Okay.
Um, and so he'll know as soon as he goes in there if there's going to be a problem. But, um, I think, I think we're going to be okay.
Okay. Okay, just a thought.
Mm-hmm.
So you said three to four days to complete total, the whole project?
Yes. He, he has to, he's made forms for the platforms. And, um, he's going to pour the cement. I don't know how long, I'm not an expert. I don't know how long it takes for cement to get hardened. But, um, he's, he also has all the mosaics that he is, he has made a backing, a cement backing for them. And they will be ready to go into the appropriate spot. And then, um, I, the, um, the bronze plaques that we're putting on them, he will do that for us also. And those are supposed to arrive, um, next week, probably just in time for him to put them on. Because I don't want to have to keep dragging them back to Marine City.
So are the plaques just going to have the names of the ships on them? Or are you going to have some?
There's actually, um, there's going to be a description of each ship.
Okay.
With the amount, as much as we can put in, in the space we have. They're all going to be a uniform size, but they have five lines of information.
Okay.
Of when they were built, um, a lot of them were rebuilt in a different manner. Uh, some of them, um, burned, and, you know, there's some interesting facts.
Okay.
So we've tried to get that in. Then there will be a small plaque that recognizes the, uh, we got a couple of small grants from the community foundation, and they do like to be recognized. So those will be on each plaque. And then the ones that, we have five major donors. And, um, they either are in memory of somebody, or it's just a generous donation of so-and-so.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, and that goes below at the bottom. So they look, you know, pretty uniform in style, size, and so on. So I'm hoping they look wonderful.
Anyone else?
Do you think that it would be a good idea to put, um, like a, like a completion date on this? I think there's, I think we should have a completion date.
Well, I'm hoping it's going to be completed next week. But I couldn't, you know, if suddenly there's bad weather, um, I, I certainly couldn't guarantee that. But we want this done now because we like to do, um, a celebration and invite the people who have donated to it and.
Sure.
All of you and so on. We'd like to have a champagne event at Laura's place in the Mariner, because she said she would do that. So we, we want a date, too, but it's not something you can absolutely say it's going to be done.
No, but I mean, if we could, you know, put it like the end of September, end of October, just so that we know that by this time.
Oh, I'm hoping it's done.
I'm hoping, too.
By the end of next week.
Right.
But I can't guarantee that.
How about 90 days?
Yeah.
And if it's not done, could you come back and report to us?
In 90 days, did you say?
Only if it's not done.
Oh, it better be done.
I was trying to give you, is that it?
Yep, I agree.
Heather, are you still waiting for two more, um, mosaics to be done?
Oh, no, we have done, they're all made. We have eight completed.
Okay.
I think what you're reading was something I wrote quite a while ago.
Okay.
And at that point, we'd only received six back. And the person who was converting the artwork into mosaics, she was still working on the other two.
So they all ate her completely?
All eight of them. And we're hoping that she's going to come. She's from New York, so it'd be kind of nice if she'll come. She's excited.
So we worded, so it's 90 days after the start of this project, or 90 days after today?
90 days from today.
From today. Okay. Okay.
With that, can we get a motion then?
I make a motion to approve the installation and maintenance agreement for the mosaic project with a 90-day completion date of November 1st, 2019.
Support.
Motion support. Any other questions on it?
And that's, that's withdrawing the two from the nautical part?
Correct.
Right.
We're going to Watchman.
Should I say that in there?
No.
Exhibits.
No, I just.
We're approving the location exhibits tonight. We've already approved the maintenance agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yes.
So, um.
This is approving the exhibits.
You're, you're approving the exhibits?
Right.
Except for the one that we're not going to do now.
Right. With, with the noted change.
Yeah.
That she's mentioned.
Yes. What he said, I support that.
I seconded that.
Thank you.
I did.
Okay, I was trying to tell him what.
Any other questions on that? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, moving on to new business. We've got the introduction of ordinance number 2019-010, engine brake. First reading.
So we prepared, at your request, worked with the city manager on a very short, concise, I hope, ordinance scheme to address the operation of engine brakes declared to be a nuisance. And we have covered this to include, um, operation of an engine, a compression brake, or a mechanical exhaust device. And we've linked it to noise. The case law over the years has sided with the fact that we really don't have the authority to start regulating the actual, you can have it or you can't have it, question of these issues. But we can regulate the use of them to make excessive noise. And we all know how that works. We know how they do it. And that's what we're after here. So we focused the ordinance on the, um, on the creation of the excessive noise to be a nuisance. And then we set forth the prohibition. We gave exception, exceptions for emergencies. And we set a fine, and, um, we made it simple.
Any questions?
And we did not use any trade names.
There you go.
So are you going to figure out where you can put signs for this, too? After, if this gets approved, you'll figure out?
Yeah, yeah, we'll put them along the truck route.
Okay.
They'll say no jake braking.
So does, does this also include some of the cars that we have there going through town that have the, the modified exhaust and that kind of thing? Or is this just trucks?
We didn't, we didn't, we actually did not limit this to trucks. We, it says, uh, the operation of an engine, compression brake, or mechanical exhaust device on a gasoline-powered or diesel-powered motor vehicle. So we kept it pretty broad.
We have a couple of cars that goes down East Street.
Who enforces this?
And if you, if you look, we have, or equipped with defective or modified exhaust mufflers. That's included in here. And, and I guess what we're trying to get after is the noise factor. When people use these devices, they use them intentionally. They build up pressure, and for whatever reason, it's fun to make the noise. I, I, quite frankly, I don't understand it. Um, but we're going after it as a noise issue.
How do you define excessive noise?
One of the great, uh, one of the, a very good question. It's like chasing an odor, disturbing the peace, noise beyond reasonable, noise that is beyond normal. There is no decibel standard. There is no ability to run out and catch a decibel standard, just like it's very difficult to chase a nuisance odor. So, um, if, there's a little bit of discretion involved there.
Because it goes through the police department's discretion?
Yes.
Because there is no way of gauging it?
It's very difficult.
Because there isn't a machine that can actually, they can't.
Normally, what, um, other communities have found is over time, um, your local law enforcement folks are, they know who's doing it. And then, and then they wait, and then they get them.
Mm-hmm.
And I think when they get them, it's not the first time. By then, they've, they've set a pattern. And, um, we had this problem in a, in a small village. And once we, I think we issued four tickets, and we never had another problem.
Well, can I get a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion for the first reading.
Support.
Motion support. Any other questions on it? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Burkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to city manager's evaluation.
Okay, all right. Um, last year, um, gave, Lisa and I the, uh, the duty of, the task of working on Elaine's evaluation. So we sat there and we, we compiled everybody's evaluations. And through this, Lisa and I kind of had some conversation that there is definitely a way to streamline this and to also, and I don't mean to streamline it, to simplify it, you know, to make Elaine's evaluation seem, um, you know, like it's not important. But just so that, to make it, to give it a little more meat and to have it make a little more sense. So, um, one of the first things that I mentioned to Lisa was we'd like to make it so that we have a digital copy of this. Because what we had before was a PDF copy of it. And it was a little, if you, if you weren't used to working with PDFs, it could get a little cumbersome, and it's just a little more, a little difficult to use. And it didn't do any calculations or averages. Um, I was going to take this and, uh, and actually put it into a form, like a Google form or something like that, to make it so that it was something that we could all use. Um, and I happened to mention to Elaine and to Chris and that, you know, you know, can, do you guys have a clean copy of this? Because actually, the copy that we did have had one of the domains actually blacked out. So I was going to need a little cleaner copy. Well, nobody had a cleaner copy. But Chris said that she could have Michelle retype it for us. Well, Michelle also happens to be a whiz at Excel. And so Michelle put this, this into Excel for us so that if somebody has Excel on their computer or has access to it, um, and we'll, we'll actually go through how to use this tool at our next meeting, um, that the thing will do all the calculations for you. It'll actually go through, and it will do all the calculations for you right there. Um, it's easy to type into, um, you know, for comments and that kind of thing. And as soon as you start punching in the numbers, they're going to start doing the averages for you. Um, yet, of course, you know, it's not like written in stone that you're going to have to do it online, but it would certainly make it nice if you did. Um, so, um, another thing that I thought would be important is to go ahead and do, have a timeline on this so that, you know, we all knew where we are, we're at and where we were going. So you can see, so today, we're just introducing the tool to the commission. Um, August 15th, I think it's important that we sit down and we have, we review the evaluation tool together, discuss each domain and element in each domain so that we all have the same understanding of what it is we're evaluating. Because if we're talking about, you know, like if we just look at one thing that includes, administers and adopts budget within the framework of the approved revenues and expenditures, well, I mean, that's pretty self-explanatory, but there might be some other things in there where I might think it means one thing, and Paul might think it means another. So we just all need to be on the same page about what we are evaluating. Um, so, you know, we can kind of go through those together. Um, so it would be good for everybody to, to take this and take a look at this before our next meeting so that you know what it is we're working with. This is the same evaluation that we used last year. All the language is the same, it's just in a different form. That's all it is. Um, so on September 19th, then, so we'll discuss it on August 15th. September 19th, we would like all the completed evaluations due to either Lisa or myself. Do not submit these to City Hall. Um, and then, now, this is something that we need to decide, and we don't have to decide it tonight. But December 26th or October 3rd, um, the city manager will receive a copy of the compiled evaluation to allow her to review and prep for closed session review. Because we will do the review in a closed session. And I think it's very important that Elaine sees this completed evaluation before she walks into the closed session so that she has the opportunity for rebuttal, if necessary, or to provide us with, you know, either verbal or hard copy documentation of something to support, you know, something that she sees that she may or may not agree with. And then on October 3rd or 17th, we go into a closed session to discuss and compile the evaluation with, with Elaine. So, um, and that, so that's pretty much it. In a nutshell, you have the eval, you have the timeline, you have the evaluation tool, and then you have the actual, the compiled rating worksheet for the annual review. So that's, uh, that's pretty much it. So we'll have the, once everybody's in agreement, we'll have some more discussion about it at our next meeting, and we'll go from there.
Just on, uh, on the Open Meetings Act under section 10, the decision to have your review in closed session is Elaine's choice.
Okay.
Um, normally, people do it in closed session. But she does have the option, under the law, to do it in open session.
Any questions on it?
Wendy, would it be helpful for you to nail down these dates now so next time I can bring this back with?
Sure.
All the dates for everybody to follow through their calendars?
If everybody's in agreement, I'm, I'm, I'll be on board with that. I might have an issue with August 15th. Um, I will, if I'm here, I gotta think about this. I'm probably going to be late, but I'll, I'll, I'll be here, but I'll be late for, for this meeting on August 15th.
One thing you can always consider is that you could watch the audio.
Mm-hmm.
Watch the video of it. So that if we kind of do go through the training, and then if you have, you know, their questions or follow-ups, you could either speak with Wendy or Lisa.
Or we could make sure that this is discussed toward the end of that meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
That's it. Okay, so do we, um, shoot, Chris, I did not bring the thing. When did we do the, the, the?
Last year.
Yeah, the final.
We headed it out in mid-August, and it was due back October 1st. So they had like a month and a half last time.
So you just want to nail down dates?
I thought it'd be helpful, then I could update this and put the exact dates, and everybody can put it on their calendars. But it's up to you.
Elaine, if you received it on the 26th, would you be ready for a closed session on October 3rd?
Definitely.
Okay.
Just want to go with the?
If everybody's good with that, we'll just have those dates, the 26th and the 3rd, and then everything else stay the same?
Do, does everyone think that or date, or, I'm sorry, you have a month in between? Never mind.
And there'll be some of us that they'll have to remind to get it into.
You mean hound?
Yes, that would be another word. The hound would be another word. But it's digital, I can do it quicker. But if everybody's good with this, we can move on to the next topic, unless anybody else has anything else for it?
I just want to say one thing. I want to thank Michelle and Chris for their help with this. Thank you very much. Great job.
All right. Thank you, Wendy. Thank you. Lisa? All right, moving on to road paving project.
The infrastructure subcommittee met several times in both June and July to review some of the information regarding the streets that we were looking at doing for a paving project for the 2019-2020 budget year. As you may recall, when we originally did the budget, we had $211,000 in the budget. And half of that was going to be a grant that we were anticipating getting from the state. Unfortunately, we did not receive that grant, which brings us down to $105,000 for consideration for a road project in this fiscal year. Uh, the, the group spent quite a bit of time discussing and planning, and... and the decision that they made was to focus their efforts on just Ward Street this year from M-29 to South Bell River. And then the anticipation is that the extra funds that would be able to be utilized for that would be used for an infrastructure plus road project in the following fiscal year.
So we couldn't hedge out one more road? Couldn't stretch it just to get one more so we could keep doing two? I mean, I've never been known to push things, but.
It would just be digging into fund balance?
Mr. Moran, is there another street that we could look at to do a second one that doesn't have infrastructure involved?
I'd have to look at the numbers on this, because it's really tight unless you want to go outside of what we have already budgeted.
Well, yeah, I do. I do.
Let's not beat around the bush here, Dave.
That was the gist I got.
And, because we do have some surplus funds we haven't used, you know, in its entirety in past budgets and the more we can get repaved.
Reach into the fire soon.
I know that, but if we could find, I'd like to go ahead with this, but also see if we could maybe look for one more street. Because we got two done last year, if we could, you know, knock a couple more out, that's just, we're whittling away, eating that elephant one bite at a time.
From my recollections of our last meeting, I think this project was going to come in around 60 or 70,000 and the next one that we were looking at was going to be another 70, 80,000, something like that. So you're looking at getting into about another 10 to 20,000 to do another road beyond what we had budgeted.
I think that would be, I think the way we need to go. And start, and I know we, we don't want to, you know, eat away at the fund balance, but we've got a very, very healthy fund balance right now and I don't think that would make a major dent in it.
Yeah, we can meet one more time and come up with another road then.
But I'd like to go ahead with preparations to get this road done. Is that, this won't slow this down at all.
Yeah, we'll work with an engineer to come up with the plans for the road and get those specs out to bids and should be doing the project in the spring.
So does the rest of the board feel that's the same way?
Did you want to approve this road now?
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and start, begin the process on the Ward Street repaving and then trying also get another additional road done with this budget year.
Support.
Any questions or concerns on this? Yes.
One of the other things we discussed at the meeting was you probably see a lot in this area now of what the county's doing with the grind and lay it back down.
Yep.
And I asked Mike about that and Mike said that he didn't think that would last 10 years. But that was another question I had, couldn't we do that?
It's a new technology they're doing it. They don't put the asphalt, the new asphalt isn't as thick because they use the old asphalt as a tar-infused base. Because they actually did miser with it.
Yeah.
And, but I didn't feel that it was as thick as what I've seen them do in the past and I'm not an engineer by any means. I watched them do it and it was impressive how quick they can get it done.
They did miser, they did.
Chartier.
Chartier, they did.
Well, Chartier wasn't a grindout, was it?
Yeah.
Was that a grindout?
And I was looking at it as they're doing it because they're doing it more in the townships. And I just had a question and that you're not getting new stuff, but you're recycling.
Well, they do put a new layer asphalt on the top.
But you're recycling.
It's something we could research anyway.
There are actually quite a few new methods that are being explored out there, some with the rubberized material in, some with fiberglass material in the roads, but nothing's really been time-tested at this point.
Not enough time has passed.
And some of it's not available in this area. Because they, some of the grants were given, I believe in Saint Blair and they were having an issue getting some of the material for that grant because of the size, size and scope of some of these smaller projects. But we can look into.
We had discussed it, like you said, and Mike thought that to dump our money into that and wouldn't get a lot of life out of the road. There was, there were several things we talked about, so.
Yeah, a lot of issue with some of these new paving methods is that they claim that they will cost a little more upfront, but you should get a little more durability, but like, like we said, it's just not time-tested yet.
But I would just like to move on with what we've got and the systems we're using now and maybe look at trying something new at one of the two, but. Any other questions on the motion? This one, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner McCannan.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you again. And moving on to the Kaboom Grant. Never thought anything Kaboom at the city meeting, but.
Kaboom funded in portion by the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation as well.
Oh.
Several meetings ago, we had a grant application before the commission for this grant for the parklet. This was something that was a very small window for approval that we put together and didn't really have a lot of information when we originally came to city commission for the grant approval. You did give the grant approval and we were approved for the grant. This is more information that I just wanted to share with all of you to make sure that we are still in favor of moving forward with this grant proposal. As you can see, there's a lot of great ideas and things that will be in this park from a musical perspective. The $10,000 that will be from the city is in-kind donations and partially staff time that will be used to start building this park. We'll also be looking for donations and we'll be doing a lot of media blitz for it as well.
So what do you need from us tonight?
I would just like to, in essence, have approval to continue moving forward with this grant.
First I want to say, I love the idea, I love the grant. I've had a lot of people call me about the location. Due to the fact that we've got the DPW coming in out, the buses coming out, busy gas station, four-lane highway, car washed. Is the location firm?
You know what, I don't know of anywhere else where we would necessarily put this. The whole reason for this location is because it's utilizing an underutilized spot and it's something where it's within the safe routes to schools area and it's not something that is going to be a park where people go and it's something for people that are crossing through.
I think though what you're going to find is people are going to want to go and they're going to want to park and they're going to want to utilize it. What about like behind the library or along the path or by the Little League Field, which is again routing towards the path? I mean, both of those are, I don't know, I'm just concerned safety-wise, that's all. I mean, like I said, I love it. This is a great thing to do, it's just the concern is the safety.
This has been an underutilized location and at one point in time, it was discussed putting something in there.
True, but a lot of it is.
So that's why we chose the location.
A lot of it is because of safety. Like I said, you got all that equipment coming out, you've got the buses coming in, fueling there, you've got a busy gas station and that, a lot of them had concerns about that over. The idea is great, it's just a lot of people were concerned about the location because of safety.
I think there might actually be a bus stop close to that area as well. That was part of the rationale behind the location as well.
Was this going to be fenced?
There's going to be shrubbery.
But I do say by that busy gas station, there's a lot of kids at that gas station. It's a very busy because they do travel to it if there was a park there or not, so I mean.
Well, the older kids, but I'm talking little kids, little kids are going to want to play with this probably even more. It's, I was just asked to bring the concern and I guess I had the same concern that they did. Again, not against it, it's great, love it, just concerned about the area that we've chosen.
One of the things I think for the location is that in essence it's kind of like a, I can't remember exactly what they call it, a park desert that you don't have anything really in that area.
Well, again, I think there was a reason. There was nothing in that area. Used to be the water tower, but.
Anyone else have any questions or concerns on it?
Well, that's the only thing I had because we got the DPW, got their diesel and their gas pumps right there. And then you put this new pressurized gas tank in there with that wall it comes in and then you've got the gas station next door, just, that's where our old water tower used to be. So, it just, for little kids, I don't think it's a place for it. The kids that are at the gas station, they're going to be older anyway, they're going to be the ones that are doing all the damage to it.
They're going to do damage to it no matter where we go to it, they're going to do it, it doesn't matter.
That's the only comments I have.
Being in the open, being in a high visible area, I think it's got less chance for damage. Some areas, if you put it further back, they will have more time and ability to do things to it.
Have we, have any gas leaks there from the fire department?
Do we what?
Had any gas leaks with the buses and them refueling?
No, not a single call. They also have a blast proof wall they had built there, so. What are you, you're looking for a motion to move forward?
Correct.
So can I get a motion to move forward with this grant?
If we did change the location, would that affect this grant at all?
I'm not sure, but I can certainly find out. I don't know where else we would necessarily move it where there isn't already a park.
How much of our water mains are under, do we know?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Water mains, that's the old, did we just leave our mains in the ground there and just tee them off and do something else and took the tower down? Is there anything underground?
Mike was working with this, so I would believe that he would know what's under there and if this plan is something, then we'd be able to go in.
I make a motion to move forward with the Bridge to Bay Musical Parklet Grant.
Second.
Any other questions or concerns on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, that's how we're doing it?
Well, it's not, we're not spending any money on it. It doesn't say to do roll call on this one.
You're okay with that?
We're okay with that one?
Did we, did we do it? Can we do it again?
Sure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on with disbursements, including payroll of $603,797.19.
I make a motion to approve total disbursements, including payroll for $603,797.19.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on disbursements? Hearing non-roll call votes please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner McCannan.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to city manager's report.
Well, I attended the first pension board meeting with our new board and it went well, except for all the rain that kept us here. I have met with Wade Trim, our representative for planning and we've reviewed the preliminary proposal, first round of ordinances. So he'll be working on some drafts that we hope to have before you in September. I'm working with the emergency manager, Justin Westmiller, to set up a public meeting for the high water, discussing alternatives, options that people have, places that they can go, people that they can talk to for more information and also kind of expanding that conversation to winter because with the high water levels, winter damming, the ice damming that we had last year was a problem, this year could be even worse. I've been working with the HR legal representative on the personnel policies and procedures. We've been working our way towards the final draft and we're almost there, so I hope to have that for a meeting very soon. The water tower repairs have been made. It took a lot of time from DPW and some early mornings and long afternoons working on that. It did pull them away from a lot of other work that they've needed to do, so now that those repairs are done, I certainly hope that they'll be able to get back to more of that after Maritime Day's work is done. The Clinton Friendship, I got a request for them to dock overnight on our seawall for one night. That would be August 7th, September 7th?
August. And it's for fundraiser for?
Right, so they, they may or may not, depends on, I think, the weather and how late they're out, if they'll be able to make it back down to the Clinton River or not. The police chief has a webinar on the general orders program alternative on the 9th. He did also speak with our insurance agent and he is willing to help assist with some of the costs, whether we go with this new system or have our current ones updated. The state has set emergency marijuana establishment rules that are in effect for the next six months, so they still have not set any permanent rules for us to take a look at yet. So I'll continue monitoring that and let you know when I hear if they have any final rules. And that's it.
Any questions for the city manager?
I know we had the deluge the other night, about two and a half inches quickly, but a lot of people tried to clean their drains, a little daylight and a dollar short, but we've got to get after trying to clean a lot of these grates out so that the stuff flows better. But there's a lot of them that are pretty plugged solid with debris on the top, so that's why.
Yeah, we, we had the street sweeper out, but they got pulled off the street sweeper duty and they had to go work on the fire hydrants, unfortunately, bad timing and not enough staff. But fortunately, they, they did drain rather quickly.
Yeah, Mike did call me on a couple more hydrants that were damaged last week too, so they've been dealing with the tower and damaged hydrants.
Hopefully, we're done with that for now.
Damage hydrants or water tower?
Both.
Okay.
Issues, just DPW issues. Hopefully, we can get back to business because I know he's got a pretty long list of things to work on, a backlog.
Hate to say it, but fall's starting to get here.
One more month.
Any other questions for the city manager? Hearing now moving on to commissioner privilege. Cheryl, would you like to start us out?
Yes, I just wanted to remind everyone that it is the 40th Annual Maritime Days Festival this weekend coming up. Starts tomorrow and runs through Sunday at 6 o'clock. If anybody needs an event schedule of all the events, you can go to the website at www.maritimesdays.net and I'm sure that there's a lot of these all over the place, so you can get a schedule and there's a lot of nice things to do for kids and beer tent and all bands and all kinds of fun stuff. So hopefully see you downtown. That's it.
I don't have anything, Seaton.
Mr. Clausen, you got something for us?
Comic con is in September.
Yeah, we're a month away. But I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, heavy rains and that stuff there, so, and otherwise, the only comment I had is with our new streets, our new subdivision going. I had is with our, our new streets, our, our new subdivision going in, and I, I hope we don't run into any problems with the, with our old streets, so. And we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Wendy?
Yeah, um, I just wanna take a couple minutes to thank the maritime committee in advance for the work that they've, that they've done, putting our, our event this weekend together. They're taking a lot of heat right now for the fact that there's no firework and, you know, they're, the parade's smaller and that kind of thing, and there's certain things that aren't going on, but they're doing the best they ha, they can with, with the funds that they have. And, you know, I think if the community next year wants something bigger and, and, and better, then, you know, I think what we need to do is pay more attention to the fundraisers that they do and, and join in and help them out a little bit. I mean, you know, the businesses are, I mean, there's a whole list of businesses there that we've all put in, you know, money to try to, you know, to try to help them, but an event like this, it takes, it takes a village to, to get, pull an event like this off. And I think we've got a great little town and I think it would support, and it has in the past. I mean, this has been a great event in the past and I think it's gonna be a lot of fun this weekend, you know, so get out there and enjoy what it is that, that's gonna offer us. Um, and also, I, I wanna, you know, Lisa mentioned it, something about the storm drains and stuff like that, but, you know, I, I don't care if you're, if you're a, a business owner who does it yourself or has somebody do it, you know, landscaping company or whatever, come out and take care of your stuff, or if you're a homeowner, a renter, a landlord, whatever you are, you have a responsibility to keep your yards and your curbs and the, and the area around your home clean and neat. I, you know, your bushes trimmed and everything else and, and, and I don't mean to sound harsh, but just have some pride in what, what's going on there right now. Don't wait till you get a fine or a notice from the city to trim back your bushes because they're hanging over the sidewalk. I'm not saying you have to go out there and trim with a pair of scissors like I've been known to do, but, you know, you know, just, you know, take, take, take a few minutes, you know, and if your neighbor needs some help because they, they're, they can't do it, then help. So, but, you know, we got a beautiful town and let's, let's just take advantage of it. But again, we've gotta do it. Our DPW can't do all that. So, you know, and it's not what they're supposed to be doing anyways, so. That's it.
Lisa?
All right, I have something for you tonight. I was approached by a group of homeowners over on 4th and 6th Street, concerned about this condo development. I only got this two hours ago myself. They asked me if I would bring this forward to the commission. They have a petition that they've created requesting that we, they do something to get the street to go through instead of pushing all that traffic into their neighborhoods. So, I told them that I would bring this forward. I'd like to see that this board discuss what we can do for these people. There's a lot of signatures here. They took the time to draft it up, they took the time to try to do something proactive to make their wishes known, and so I promised them that I would bring it forward to this meeting, so I'll give this to you tonight. They have a copy, but I think this needs to be discussed on what we can do to resolve this issue, 'cause not only this one develop could go in, there could be another one. And that's a lot of traffic to dump into that small neighborhood with the way the roads are, so. Anyway, I promised them I'd bring this forward for them. I think we need to really look at, you know, at least that they made a big effort to try to tell us something.
Yeah, I'll work with the attorney and the developer and see what we can.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Nothing.
I don't have a whole lot today. Yes, it rained. I was happy, finally. I know it plugged up and we had a couple floods, but I'll sit through on that planning commis, planning meeting with the emergency manager, also represent at least the fire department for you, answer any questions of what the fire department's role will be in a flooding scenario and what we've done in other, some of the other communities that we do service, like East China, we've dealt with it last year a little, you know, for at least two to three months that we dealt with their flooding there, so. I know I, there's gonna be a lot of questions and there's, there's a lot of things that we're gonna have to answer, there's things, there's a lot of things we can't do. Being water's extremely strong and especially that big river is, it's scary when it floods, so.
Yep.
With that, let's hope for a warm, dry winter. Uh, with that, can we get adjourned?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gary.